Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council for Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. Welcome, everyone who is in the audience and watching from home or away. I'd like to go ahead and call roll for tonight's meeting, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Dorman?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doren Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And before we continue, I do want to ask folks to recognize the passing of Jerry Harris, who has been a member of our community for a very long time, who passed away yesterday. She served two terms on this Yountville Council, elected first in 1982, re-elected in 84, and served until the end of her term in 1986. So if you would please join all of us in a moment of silence to remember Jerry Harris. Thank you very much. Please join us now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt our agenda, our town attorney, Gary, you have a closed session report from our special meeting that we just held?
Yes, there is one item to report at a closed session for the special meeting held immediately before this regular meeting. The council authorized 5-0, the initiation of litigation. Disclosure of the names would jeopardize service of process. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as presented?
The button's coming up.
Let's just do it verbally.
Okay, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Proclamations and recognitions. Okay, here we go, almost everyone in the audience gets a bottle. You get a bottle, and you get a bottle. You don't get a bottle. You get a bottle. We are very pleased to recognize the General Plan and Vision Yountville Town Advisory Group, most of whom are in attendance tonight. Many hours of commitment to meetings, workshops, open houses, more meetings, many, many pages of analysis, so we very much appreciate all the time that you've put in. There's still a lot of the process left to go, but we could not have done it as well without all of you and all of your input. So you're all getting some wine. So if you would all please join me at the podium. And I'm going to ask the vice chair, Boyd Dennington, once I give out the wine, to share a couple of thoughts.
Wait a minute, you weren't on the... Stay on the other.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We do this at every meeting.
Hold it. Almost dropped a lot.
Boyd? Yeah, we need a tighter shot for the photo wall. Get on in here.
Okay.
John, get out of there.
Why are you here?
One, two, three.
Boyd? So, just on behalf of the tag, I actually want to recognize our chair, Eric Knight, who's not with us tonight. He was feeling ill. He did an excellent job, I think we can all agree. He's a great leader for us. And thank you, Eric. Now I have to speak. I also want to thank any members of the public that came, that might be watching or who are here, that came to our meetings. Your input was very useful, both at our meetings and the workshops. Thank you also for being kind to us. There were some contentious subjects, so thank you for working with us. Thank you to the council for trusting us with this task. It was an honor and a pleasure to serve our community. And then staff and the consultants that we worked with, thank you. You fielded many emails and questions from us rookies. We're not privy to your language, so it was quite an educational process, and I appreciate that. And our job, as Mayor Dunbar mentioned, is complete as a tag, but there's still a lot of work to be done. And I look forward, as a member of the public, to, you know, continue molding the Envision Yountville process and the general plan, and hopefully we've provided a good foundation for you to work with.
Great, thanks. Thank you very much. Next, there is a presentation of a proclamation recognizes September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And Michelle Farhat, gonna ask if you would join me at the podium. Michelle is from the Aldea Children's and Family Services.
Slide over here a little bit more so I can get on the microphone. Thank you for being here. This is a proclamation recognizing Suicide Prevention Month for September 2018. Whereas the Napa County Suicide Prevention Council, a public-private collaboration of Napa families impacted by suicide and agencies that serve the Napa County community, strives to save lives and envisions a suicide-free community through education and training, stigma reduction, and provision of resources to combat suicide. Whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, the second leading cause of death among individuals 25 to 34, and the third leading cause of death among individuals aged 15 to 24. Whereas between 2000 and 2017, Napa County averaged more than 14 suicide deaths annually, according to the Napa County Sheriff's Coroner. Whereas the rate of deaths by suicide in Napa County from 2008 to 2016 was greater than the California suicide rate, again, according to the Napa County Sheriff's Coroner data, among others. Whereas every Napa County resident can be an ally by learning about the warning signs of suicidal behavior and how to support someone at risk of suicide. Whereas every Napa County resident can help eliminate the stigma associated with suicide and mental illness by treating individuals with mental illness with respect and compassion. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the Town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Suicide Prevention Month in Yountville, and urge the citizens of Yountville to learn more about suicide detection and prevention. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Can I say a couple?
Absolutely, you can say a few words. Go ahead, please stay by the mic so people watching at home can hear you.
Gotcha, sorry. We are gifting the city, we started a anti-stigma messaging campaign with the Suicide Prevention Council, so you'll see this image, I'm just gonna, on all the buses for this month of September, which will go up and down the whole county. But our goal is to reduce the rate of suicide in Napa County. As John said, we have a higher rate than the national average, and we want to do things to reduce that. So we appreciate the acknowledgement here today, and we hope to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you could just leave that with Sandra?
Quick picture.
Of course, yeah, let me get back down there. Michelle, before you turn that off?
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, public comment on matters not on tonight's agenda. I know that we do have some guests here this evening that would like to address the council. I'd invite you to come on up first, if you'd like.
Good evening, Mayor Dunbar, good evening, council members. My name is Ilana Adelson, and I'm a Yountville resident. I'm also here representing the newly-formed Napa Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Just to give you a little bit of background, Moms Demand Action was founded by stay-at-home mom Shannon Watts on December 15, 2012, in response to the devastating shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary School. The organization quickly flourished into a leading force for gun violence prevention and has chapters in all 50 states and a powerful grassroots network that has successfully prompted change at the local, state, and national level. You may recall that our local chapter here in Napa, along with Giffords, were the two beneficiaries of the walk-run benefit that was organized here in Yountville on June 30. To give you a little bit more background information, I'd like to note that it's especially important to be aware that Moms Demand Action is not anti-gun ownership. Moms Demand Action and its parent organization, Everytown for Gun Safety, advocate for evidence-based solutions to keep families and communities safe from gun violence. While we support legal, responsible gun ownership, we, like most Americans, we also support common sense laws that aim to reduce gun violence in all of its forms. As you all know, on March 9th of this year, multiple lives were tragically lost to gun violence right here in our own very little community of Yountville. In an effort to signal a united front against the epidemic of gun violence, we therefore ask Mayor Dunbar to consider our proposal to join Mayors Against Illegal Guns. This involves signing a statement of principles outlining how towns like Yountville can keep illegal guns out of our communities by enforcing existing laws to their fullest extent and partnering with other towns and cities in the fight against illegal gun trafficking. There is no cost to join Mayors Against Illegal Guns. Fifty-eight mayors across California have already signed on, including the mayor of Napa and the mayor of American Canyon. Mayor Dunbar, we appreciate your service to our community, and like many members of the Yountville community, we would be especially appreciative of your leadership on the issue of gun violence prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe the national website is everytown.org, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you'd like us to send you more information that way, we can also do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for folks that aren't normally here, we're not allowed to discuss or take any action specifically on items brought to us during public comment. Anyone else for public comment? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you're doing well, haven't seen some of you in a while. Whitney Diver-McAvoy with the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to inform our community this evening that today the Yountville Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors endorsed Measure I and S, yes, on workforce housing. Measure I is the initiative for all of Napa County, and Measure S is the initiative for Yountville. We believe that the business community should be right at the forefront of supporting workforce housing in Napa County and right here in Yountville. We encourage our fellow business owners, employees, and of course, our residents here in Yountville to support the measure. We look forward to getting the word out with other jurisdictions throughout the valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You don't get another bottle of wine for that. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, thank you for the public comments. We'll move on to our consent calendar, and I believe did the town attorney, or I guess the town manager, had something to say before we proceed?
We had a request for a clarification of what the town's personnel rules and procedures are and aren't. And what I wanted to lay out, based on the inquiry, the personnel rules and procedures are the legal document and structure for how we run the organization, in terms of how employees are treated, accord, compliance with federal and state law. They have nothing to do with salaries of our employees, nothing to do with the budget allocation. As you may recall, our MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding, that are negotiated, those govern salary and wages, and the budget allocation that you approve annually actually determines how many employees we have in the structure. But there was an inquiry as to what were the differences. And I also want to point out that we periodically, on about a five-to-six-year cycle, review our personnel rules for compliance with federal and state law. And if you want to think about this, we're an employer, and there are provisions and things that we have to comply with in federal and state law, and about how we go about. So just, there was a request for clarification, and I hope that that addresses the intent of the request.
Thank you very much. With that clarification, is there a motion?
Mayor, before we proceed, I do have a change to the August 7 minutes, and it's to Item 6, 9A, and 10C of the August 7 minutes, and those have been distributed for your review, and a copy has also been made available to the public.
So are those?
In blue font.
Yeah, but are those content-based changes?
Yes.
Okay.
9A is.
So if the council needs to take a moment just to review that, or if prepared to make a motion? Here we go.
Yeah, I read them earlier. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
Okay. Assuming all has had a chance to review, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That passes, thank you, and thank you for the reminder about the, yeah, it works, sort of.
Mine didn't.
Well, no one did anything.
No, Michelle did it magically.
It's changed in here since our server upgrade.
Okay.
It's been for me, too.
I agree for it.
Bottom line is, we just approved the consent calendar.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
I've made presentations, we have none, public hearings, we have none, administrative regular items, we have none. We're gonna go straight to our staff informational reports. First one, sensing a theme here this evening, General Plan informational report. Sandra?
Let's do this one. Oh, sorry. All right. Good evening. We are happy to share with you tonight an update on the Envision Yountville General Plan Update process, and this is a process that commenced in February of last year, and it's been broken into three different phases, and we are now entering the third phase. The first phase, it started in February of 2017, was the speaker series, and that was a five-part series where we brought in experts to discuss existing conditions, and it allowed the community to explore trends and to share thoughts and ideas on the issues affecting Yountville and those things that make Yountville unique and special, with the idea that we want to preserve those as part of this General Plan Update process. The speaker series concluded in May of 2017, and the following month, the council appointed the 11-member Town Advisory Group that we recognized here tonight. That group consisted of nine members and two alternates, and they were tasked with reviewing all of the existing general plan goals, policies, and programs from the 1992 general plan. And they discussed the public input that was received at the three public workshops that occurred over the year that they dealt into the general plan, and they offered recommendations to maintain existing, add new, or delete some of the general plan goals, policies, and programs. And based on that feedback, we were able to draft a, the first draft of the general plan. And that was taken to the Town Advisory Group on August 23rd, and they indicated that it represented their consensus feedback on the items that were discussed over the course of the year, and they were very pleased with it. They had only a few minor modifications to clarify their intent or to clarify an issue, and those changes are being made. That August 23rd meeting of the tag did conclude their work, and it concluded the second segment of the General Plan Update process, and we will, and we are moving now into the Town Council review of the general plan, and what we hope is a very public process over the next six months. So I mentioned we're making some minor modifications to the manuscript draft or the narrative draft that the tag saw in August, and that was really just a Word draft, and our graphic designer now has it, and they're inputting graphs and maps and illustrations, all the things that make the general plan really interesting to read and a document that is used rather than sitting on a bookshelf. And we anticipate receiving that, the initial public draft by the end of this month. We'll be posting it here to the Envision Yountville webpage that I have up on the screens, and we'll be making copies available here at Town Hall. What's important about the release date of end of month is that we can make that draft available to the public, to the council, and to anyone who's interested, about two weeks before the next important event, which is the public open house. And that's scheduled for Saturday, October 13th, between 10:00 and 2:00. And we're still working on the format of what that meeting will be like, and we'd like to share more details with you on October 2nd as a way to hopefully get the public excited, because this is the public phase that we're now entering. We've been working on the General Plan Update in some manner for the last year and a half, but this is the first time it really becomes a public process, and we will soon have a draft that the public can weigh in on, that the boards and commissions and the council can weigh in on, and we acknowledge that this truly is a first draft. We will see changes. There may be minor modifications, they could be much more significant. We're not exactly sure what we'll hear from the public when we bring it to them, but we know there will be changes. So October kicks off that effort on Saturday, the 13th, and November will take it to the boards and commissions, then that includes the Arts Council, the ZDRB, and the P-RAC. And then in December, we'll bring that initial public draft to the Town Council. And all of these will be public meetings, and the feedback that is obtained will be incorporated into the modified or final public draft that will then come before just the ZDRB for a recommendation in what we hope is February of 2019, and before the council in March of 2019 for adoption. And that's, if everything runs smoothly, there may be opportunity to shift some of those dates, but that's our overall goal. And like I say, over the next six months, we really want the public to come out to these meetings. We're going to get the word out there, and we want to get a lot of feedback. So you'll soon see it. We're now in that third phase, and I just wanted to show you where on the webpage here you or the public could access some of the items. I can't even walk you through it because there's something going on with this screen for some reason. Oh, there we go. Oh, yeah, okay, I think I can navigate this way. Sorry, this takes a lot of skill. This button here, let's go to the second one, Project Timeline. This includes the process we've been through thus far, but also at the very bottom, it includes all of the dates that I've just mentioned, so the public can access this. What this does is remind me that in tandem with the draft that will be circulated at end of month, we'll be reviewing the Environmental Impact Report, and it's important that those two proceed together, because any changes to the general plan will result in changes to the EIR. So those will continue side by side until the end of this process. There is also an opportunity to go and look at the different meetings and news and hear more about the speaker series. This next one is the Project Library, where we have many of the documents that have informed this effort and all of the existing documents on the general plan, and this is a good resource to the public over the next six months. So simply an update I'm sharing with you, and I hope you're excited as we, as the general plan comes your way, finally.
So videos from previous sessions, workshops, whatever they were called?
Yes.
Are also available?
Yes, we have videos on here.
So if someone missed a particular topic?
Yeah.
They can go back and take a look?
Yeah.
Or want to be reminded about it?
Yes. All of the past activity from when this started in February of 2017 to the present is documented here for the public, and they can go and research some of the history if they weren't at any of the meetings, including all the public workshops and the online surveys that we had as well to gauge input from the community.
Great. Questions? Sandra? Councilmember Mueller?
A couple. So the October 13th meeting, we'll be agendizing that as a special meeting so we can all go?
Yes.
Okay. And the second question, pretty much more of a comment, I attended a CQ update meeting in the California League, and there are expected CQ changes sometime in 2019. So where I'm trying to get is, let's try to go as fast as we can within reason, because there was a specific discussion about if you're doing your general plan, that there's gonna be new emphasis in the changes on transportation section, especially vehicle miles traveled, so we would have to do perhaps extra analysis if, you know, say we're building a big whatever, we would have to evaluate that as well. So I don't really think that we'll be doing a lot of building, but any new projects in the general plan before it's approved would have to analyze VMF.
Yes, correct. We're aware of changes that are coming, and of course, we're just dealing with the laws that exist today, and we're incorporating a lot of changes that have been required since the 92 general plan that never made it in, so.
I think several of us must have been in the room scattered around, but the concern I have about that very point is if we move quickly and approve this before the guidelines are changed, they may require that we still comply with the new guidelines, because I know that at least Sonoma County, their climate action plan has been challenged because they did not do what was determined by a court, proper analysis of a couple of the elements involving tourism, and I think it was transportation, but I can't remember the other, traffic mitigation, maybe. So yes, we learned about some changes coming up with the Appendix G checklist, transportation, water supply.
Right, so there's more emphasis on with transportation, on vehicle mile travel?
Right.
Rather than quality of life, which is...
Yeah. Yeah, so you're aware of those.
We're aware of those.
We just need to figure out, and maybe, Gary, this is where you get to chime in with Sandra about, are we benefiting by moving quickly under current conditions, or would we still be required to modify those conditions if they are changed in early 2019?
Well, we're trying to anticipate the change from LOS, Level of Service, to VMT, which is Vehicle Miles Traveled. We just don't have enough metrics now to include the other, but we are tracking it, and we're trying to be as forward-thinking as possible, because that's been in the pipeline now for years, and we know it's coming, so.
Great.
So it's on the radar, definitely.
Good.
Good, good point to bring up. Other questions? Councilmember Dorman, you're writing frantically.
I just want to thank our tag, thank our staff, and also the unsung two-by-two committee of the ZDRB and the council that's been working in the back room. Thank you, very exciting. Looking forward to it.
Any others? Vice Mayor?
I want to thank you also. It's a long process, and I think it's burnt out some of our residents, but I appreciate what they've done really so much, and especially you, Sandra. You've just done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I had it on my calendar for the open house on the 13th of October for noon to 2:00. You said 10:00 to 2:00. Is 10:00 to 2:00 the correct time?
I sure believe it is, but we will clarify.
Well, we want to make sure that the public knows, and we can make sure it's correct everywhere. Mine might have been a placeholder, that it has been there for a long time.
Okay.
So as of right now, we're saying 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Saturday, October 13th, in...
Community Center.
Community Hall. Community Hall. Okay.
So we will definitely clarify on October 2nd when we bring you the update, and we'll clarify those times for anyone who's interested.
And it'll be posted all over the place.
Yes, yes.
And it'll be sending out nextdoor.com messages and Facebook messages and everything else. All right. Any member of the public want to comment on the report, or we've kind of covered it? Okay. Two of you at least know all about it already. You've seen it. Okay, thank you very much. Next up, an update on code compliance efforts. Steve?
Briefly, what we've put together here, and Sandra will follow through, but what we tried to do is share with you and the community a little bit of the background on what is code compliance, because sometimes a lot of people don't realize things are being done, and they take a while. And we achieve a lot of success with a lot of our cases through voluntary compliance, but it takes time, because as you all know, our model that we operate under, unless it's a legal... Because as you all know, our model that we operate under, unless it's a legal issue with regard to that, is we, we do an education-first approach. So when somebody reports something, we then have to document it. We communicate. We give the party a reasonable time to comply. And then at, at a point, if they don't, then we move down a more, a more formal process. So unfortunately for some residents, you know, they've been living with whatever that issue is for a while before they report it to us. But we want to show you, because code compliance in Yountville actually includes what people would normally think of, substandard building conditions. But we also utilize the thing known as a conditional use permit. And we spend a lot of time on enforcing the conditions of the use permit. So we have a little bit of an informative presentation just to highlight some of the trend lines and issues, mostly to be a more illustrative of what's going on in the community and to, to share with some folks that there is a fair amount of staff effort and time spent on working with property owners and businesses to ensure that they comply with the conditions.
That was a great introduction. Thanks, Steve. So over the last few years, we've had an increased code compliance effort here in town, and that's really thanks to an increased code compliance budget. We're fortunate to work for four hours each week with the City, a City of Napa Code Enforcement Officer, and we have a planning fellow that devotes much of his time to some of the programs within our code compliance effort and doing the monitoring that's necessary. And it's a very time-intensive effort, so we've been able to achieve a lot more with these added resources. And I'll start walking you through some of the different programs we have in place. So. That is not the right one. So this first slide will show you about, share some details about the residential rental permit program.
Can you talk slower?
That you see here. And this is one of our newer programs. It was adopted as a new program in 2017, and we started enrolling properties on January 1st of this year. It requires that all property owners that rent their residences enroll the property with the town, and the town will issue a confirmation letter with a rental registration number. Town staff regularly monitors online and other listings to ensure that residents are using the number, but that they're advertising their units in compliance with the town code. For example, the minimum 30-day stay requirement. And you can see that we have 442 units that are enrolled across 223 properties, and that represents a staggering 35% of our housing stock. And it goes up to 40% if we are to exclude the, the mobile home. So we're finding that it's highly represent, the number of residential units is highly represented by rentals. This map shows each of those permits input on this map, and the green ones are active permits. We are showing yellow on this map, and these are ones that we think may be a rental, either because it's been a complaint of a, a neighbor, and so we're looking and sort of monitoring to see what happens with these. We're in communication with these property owners, but this is what it looks like. So you can see, we know a lot about these properties. And the purpose of registering rentals is that now that we have current contact information for property owners, and when we find an issue with a property, we can make contact with them directly. And by registering in this program, they make acknowledgements that they promise not to use it as a rental of less than 30 days. We're able to track nuisance conditions on property because these are out-of-area owners for the most part, and like I say, we're able to contact them. So it's been an interesting new program, and we're surprised somewhat by the number of rentals.
And I will say right now, we've reached the stage, especially with properties that are represented by professional real estate firms, if they're now advertising without the required permit, since we've, we've also sent education outreach letters to both the property owners with their permit, and we've also reached out to the professional real estate industry so they're aware. So we've now reached the point where when we find things that are being advertised without a permit, they're getting a notice of violation and a citation. So we promised you that we would take a slow approach to enforcement, and we're now reaching that stage where the education approach, especially when we find that we're dealing with the same commercial real estate firm that we previously had a conversation. So I just wanted to let you and everybody know that we have been going slow and doing a consultative approach, but we will now be moving more forward with the citations.
Moving on to the employee parking management program. This is a program that has the purpose of minimizing employee parking impacts to the adjoining residential areas, and it's able to do so by requiring that employees or a certain number of employees park on site and by designating approved off-site overflow locations. We have 14 businesses that have their employees enrolled in the program, and we've issued 340 parking tickets. And this is an example.
Yeah, let's call them permits, not tickets.
Tickets, permits. This is an example of a map that we provide with the confirmation, and the confirmation will indicate that the preferred area for employee parking, which is in, an onsite lot. It will identify areas for approved overflow locations. And in some, nearly all instances, we also identify prohibited neighborhood streets where there's ample more commercial areas for, for employees to park in. The conditional use permit monitoring is an important program because all of the towns' businesses operate under conditional use permits, and they're heavy on the conditions of approval that need to be complied with. We have 38 businesses that are participating, and every July 1st, we start scheduling appointments with the business owners and managers to review the conditions, and thus far, we've had eight meetings since the start of the fiscal year. The reason we're finding this program is so important is that we see employee turnover. And so when we meet with a business after, when, when there's a new employee, 99 times out of 100, they're unaware that there are conditions of approval. So it's a constant effort in, in educating the business and calling their attention to the conditions that are important and that need work and that we've had trouble with over the years. So I don't think you can have a situation in a city where you're approving permits by condition and you're not monitoring these heavily. At least we're finding that it takes a lot of effort. And we're finding that our businesses are, are working much better with us and understanding those permit terms. Yes?
Is it the code enforcement officer who meets with the businesses?
No. We, the planning fellow takes the effort of making the meetings, and he will meet with the business with myself or with our management analyst, and it's more, it's our full-time staff. Yeah. Which employee works on these depends on the type of relationship we want with the businesses, and we think it's important that it's a Yountville employee rather than a contracted code enforcement staff. Our code enforcement staff, though, is working on this next item, which are more code enforcement cases. These are things like violations of the municipal code. We see things like vacation rental violations, noise ordinance violations, weed abatement, and simply just nuisance conditions of property. You can see here, since the first of the year, we've had 71 cases that were opened. We've issued 14 citations, and we received 18,200 in fees paid on those citations. And we're expecting another 11,500 by October 15th on some outstanding noise violations, but also on an illegal vacation rental where we had, where we'd caught the owner willing to enter into an agreement for less than 30 days, and we've entered, we're in the process of entering into a settlement agreement with them and having the town's costs paid in full, and them acknowledging that they won't do this in the future and establishing what the penalty will be if it happens over a period of time, and requiring, based on this incident and behavior, that they submit information to us on all their rentals over the next three-year period. So we're now involved.
I think these statistics are an important part because we've often been, when you've talked as the council, a concern about are we being too overbearing? Are we doing enough? Are we not doing enough? And the reason I say that is 71 cases means that we've had a communication and we've worked. So in this particular case, that means 57 of the properties were resolved, the cases were resolved through our education and a couple of levels of outreach without fines and penalties being needed to be imposed. And I think it's really important that the community knows that's where we spend a lot of our time. You know, that's all, that's all cost incurred by the general fund and taking that approach and not taking a penalty-first type of approach. And then you can see, when you do get into the citations, they tend to be a bit more expensive because at that point, the, the property owners or the parties involved have been given notice, and they're now looking at thousand or more because there's been a cumulative nature of what they've been doing. So I just, to me, this is, I, I, it's important to realize we actually had 71 cases, but I think hopefully this shows the, when we talk about an education-first approach, it actually demonstrates that statistically.
This is an example of one of our code enforcement cases, and it was based on nuisance conditions and the accumulation of trash and rubbish and the potential to harbor rodents and mosquitoes. The top photos indicate before conditions and the front yard on the left and the backyard on the right and the after conditions. So it's an example. These are some of the documents that we've obtained as part of this process, and these are either lease agreements or this is renter information for rentals of less than 30 days. And it's a little surprising, some of the terms used, that remember you are our friend, you're not our renter, don't say this, say that. So this has really opened our eyes to the fact that people are trying to skirt the law, and these are some of the examples we found as part of this effort. Not all code enforcement originates in the planning department. Some of it is from Public Works, and these are right-of-way enforcement cases. I'm presenting this on behalf of Joe because he's not here, and we're fortunate to share the resources in code enforcement, and that, that four-hour officer from City of Napa helps us with these letters and the enforcement. You can see some of the thing, we see this mostly in the Old Town Historic Neighborhood where there's more of a parking problem, so residents want to secure the parking in front of their homes. They do so by placing rocks, sometimes children's furniture, and so from time to time, we send out a series of letters to these owners. These statistics show info from fiscal, last fiscal year and this fiscal year. And we do, we start with a round of courtesy letters. In 1718, we did 16 properties. Those resulted in a notice of violation for eight of the properties, and 27 of the cases received thank you letters because they were successfully closed out. This year, we have sent notices on June 20th. The second round has gone out, and we had some violations resolved. So I can't answer too many questions on this right-of-way enforcement. These are Joe's cases, but it's part of the effort that we're working on, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions of the presentation?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any member of the public, Boyd, like to ask a question or comment? Okay. Sandra, thank you very much. It, it is interesting how creative people get to try to violate the local ordinances, so we have to remain diligent. I believe we have Debbie stepping in for our next presentation, an update on dredging and sludge removal. We really brought you in for the high-profile one tonight.
Really exciting stuff, right? As we all know, the, the last couple of weeks of July, we had a dredging operation out at the, at the wastewater facility. I'm going to skip to my map here. So there, can you see the, well, they can't see the, the mouse?
That won't work on the TV.
Oh, okay. So there's a, there's, there are two ponds out at the, out at the wastewater plant. The, the one farthest to the north next to the driveway as you enter is called the effluent holding pond. That's our, that's our recycled water pond. And the other, oh, great. That's this one right here. That one, that pond holds about 2, 2.7 million gallons of fluid. The, the excess holding pond is the, is the pond where if we have too much, too much waste coming out of the plant or too much rain creating too much waste or backwash from our, from our plant, that holds that, that water, and that, and that's recycled back into the plant, and it comes back out as recycled water to the first pond. Both those ponds were built in the late 70s, mid to late 70s. They're supposed to be dredged every 20 years or so, so that was about 40 years ago. And they were, they were due for, 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 for some dredging to, to remove some of the sludge. Most of the sludge in those ponds is organic matter. It's not what we're thinking of. It's, the, the pond to the south actually had a lot of sediment and rock from, from the, the golf course in the, before the golf course was built, when during storms and that sort of stuff. The pond to the north with the recycled water was mostly leaf debris and that sort of stuff. We brought the, we brought the, we brought, we brought the, the equipment in to, this is the dredge that's placed into the pond, and this is the, this is the equipment that's used to dry, to dry out the, the sludge that comes out of the pond. It, the, the process is that they, they pump the, they pump the sludge out of the pond. It goes through the, it goes through the drying process so that, that, and the water goes back into the pond so that we have less, less to haul away. So the, the total cost of the projects were, was $150,000. We, we took out 194 total dry tons. That equates, that equates to almost a million gallons of, of capacity gained back into the ponds. Four feet came out of the excess holding pond, which is the, the pond to the south, and two and a half feet came out of the effluent holding pond. The, the sludge was, was processed, and it went off to, I'm told it went off to some sort of a, a farm in the Central Valley where it was tilled back into the soil and used as an organic nutrient matter for the, for that. This one is a video of the drying process where it goes, it's almost like a sluice box. It goes through different levels of where, where the water is squeezed out. Do I just double-click it? Oh, maybe it's that. No, that's not it.
We may just have to believe you.
Oh, this is pretty interesting.
It's best to build expectations for something like that.
Oh, there you go. So this is how it comes, the, this, this is how it comes into the first level, and as, as you can see, it'll go through each process, and the water is squeezed, squeezed out of the sludge and, until it comes to a, to a, a sort of dry tonnage state. And that, that, that is, that's placed into a truck and hauled away, and the, and the water's pumped back into the pond it came from.
But that's not what we think it is, right?
No. It's not what you think it is. It's mostly sediment and leaf debris and that sort of stuff. Yeah, it's not what you think it is.
I had a...
So this is the process. The, the dredge is out there in the pond, and there's a crane that's going to, that's the, and the, the big yellow, the big yellow thing is a crane that's going to pick it up and pull it, put, put it over into the other pond. This is over a couple of days.
Oh, wow.
The whole process happened during the last two weeks of July. I wasn't...
Oh, oh, wow.
What is the final base? When you said four feet and two and a half feet down, was that based on measurement and then it's just soil at the bottom or is there some other type of material?
There's a, there's a clay liner at the bottom. It's, there's, they, they do a probe and they, and, and they keep the dredge, the dredging wand off the, off the bottom of it so that they don't, they don't break through that liner.
Like they didn't say anything?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other, Vice Mayor?
Yes. So Debbie, with this additional tonnage available, will we be increasing the percentage of wastewater that we do recycle?
Yeah, well, we, we can recycle. In that particular pond, we've got, we've got about two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand gallons more of capacity in that partic, in the recycle pond. The other pond is our excess pond, so when we have big storms and it's raining a lot, we won't have to, we won't, we won't be as inclined to, to be purging into the, into the, into the creek there.
I think in the past, the number that I heard was that we recycle eighty-five percent to the point that through the tertiary recycling so that it can be used for agriculture. Is that number gonna go up?
Not substantially, I think, Marita, Councilor, Vice Mayor. It may, because again, remember, we use, the holding ponds are temporary. The water, there's always, if you drive by, it's always gonna look roughly the same, but that's because we put it there and then it's pumped out to the various locations in the incorporated county where we provide the water to the vineyards, the recycled water. So I won't say that it doesn't allow for a little bit more, 'cause it does. But the real, the real goal of this particular project is to give us a little more capacity in the winter rain events when we may need more holding capacity and hopefully we can avoid discharge to the Napa River.
Great, thank you. That was very informative.
The window to discharge into the river seems to have narrowed significantly and the conditions become increasingly more challenging, seems like every year.
Yes.
So it's good to have more capacity. We have no storage facility other than this.
Right. And I think, you know, one is, this is, again, and I appreciate your receptiveness to looking at this, you know, we thought, well, maybe they wouldn't and we thought, we need to show you some of the things and the public. This is proper preventative maintenance of the utility infrastructure. It's not pretty, it's not sexy, it is kind of interesting, but at the end of the day, if we don't do it, it reduces the capacity and it has increased costs, which are ultimately borne by the rate pair. Or in the case of some agencies, if we operate in violation of our permit, it results in fines, which then really come back and hurt. So I just thought it would be kind of neat, and we're periodically going to do similar to this, just to show you some of those things that you may and the public may not be as fully aware of, because it is kind of interesting and it's part of what we do.
As a new council member, the day that I had the tour of the wastewater treatment plant, it was a hundred degrees.
Yeah, I might not recommend that in the future, but...
We'll pick a different month next time. Okay, thank you. Debbie, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to council meeting reports, comments, and agenda item requests. Napa County Flood Control, Water Conservation District just met today. The one significant item, which doesn't bear a lot of direct attention from us, but a plan was received that has extensive analysis of the Milton Road flood conditions and mitigation at the very south end of the Napa River. There's an island there that, some real challenges for people that have, apparently it's transformed from kind of fishing huts to million-dollar homes, but the flood conditions are challenging at best. So that plan for three options to consider how they, that might be mitigated was presented to the, to the board. Upper Valley Waste Management, should've started right away after the dredging thing with this.
Close right in there, literally. We met, we met yesterday and we had a tour of the Upper Valley Clover Flat landfill where all of our garbage goes and the, the, the main point of that tour was to really take a close look at what happened in the last, the last major fire we had up there. And although they don't know for certain, it looks like what we call a hot load came in, like, you know, maybe a worker from one of the restaurants dumped the ash from the pizza oven, which happens more often than you would imagine, into the trash and it got picked up and thrown up there. But the, the problem was that they had been using shredded bark as their alternative daily cover, which they have to cover the trash, the new trash every night. And so now we're gonna be mandating that they put wood on there. A secondary problem was that they're, they have a big fifty-thousand-dollar gallon water tank that the fire guys can use, 'cause they don't have fire hydrants up there, and it was empty. So we are now gonna have a, another Waste Management Board meeting next Monday and we're gonna be talking about perhaps, one of the main agenda items I've added is to really talk about modernizing our upper waste management board. So I, I don't like surprises like this, so it should be an interesting meeting on Monday. And the only other thing is, I'm not, I will not be attending the next council meeting 'cause I'll be attending the Calafco Conference in Yosemite that day.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Is there any more word on composting?
As to what can go in your, we put stickers on everyone's blue cans, so, and we're kind of amazed we haven't got any questions or comments. Next year, we, by state law, we have to have police, we're calling them the trash police and they're actually gonna be looking in your can to see if you have the right thing. If you don't, you know, I can get your can picked up. But no, the, the national sword policy in China is still in full effect. We can't clean up plastics or sell a lot of stuff, so there's a lot more going into our dump. We tried to affect some legislation through the, through the league, but we got pushed back and said Cal Recycle's working on it. We didn't have to...
Thank you.
...be involved, but...
Thank you. Leave California Cities Annual Conference was very well-attended by the Town of Yountville, Town Manager, Public Works Director, and I think four of us from the council were all there. Who would like to begin with a brief summary? I know a couple of you were, I think, at policy committee meetings as well as the General Assembly. Councilmember Dorman.
Thank you. So I'm gonna start with some news about my colleagues here. Our mayor was elected to serve as the League of California Cities' second vice president for the year twenty eighteen nineteen. Our vice mayor was elected first vice president of the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities. Councilmember Moller will continue her service and leadership on the environmental quality policy through the year of twenty, committee through the year of twenty nineteen. And our town manager was elected vice president of the City Managers Department of the League of California Cities. So Yountville is having a really, some might say, outsized influence, so that's just great and congratulations to all of you and thank you. As for the conference itself, it was really invigorating, I think, is, is my biggest takeaway. There was a lot that we learned on specific topics and they focused a lot, in addition to, I mean, there was cannabis, there was taxation, there was housing, there were all that, but they focused a lot on leadership and some of the more touchy-feely stuff, but also some good key principles to take away as to how we can operate better individually and as a council. So it was really great. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing like an eight AM SEQA reform session. A couple of us made, actually. Vice Mayor, did you have thoughts?
Yes, I attended the, my policy committee, which is revenue and taxation, where we passed Resolution One, which was calling upon the League to respond to the vulnerabilities to local authority, control, and revenue that was sent to the General Session to be voted on and to consider working towards a ballot measure or a constitutional amendment that would further strengthen local democracy and authority. And we received briefings on upcoming ballot measures such as Prop Six, which would repeal the very needed tax, taxes that provide revenue to fix our roads and bridges and, and we, as a League, formally oppose it. We had lots of other, I attended lots of other conference workshops and I did enjoy also the keynote speaker, who was the founder of Day One Leadership and then author of a book named Drew Dudley, and he was very enthusiastic and vigorous. It was great. It was a wonderful, I thought this conference was especially informative and good.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller, any additional thoughts?
I just wanted to mention that I really was very impressed with all the work that had gone into the new strategic plan. I think the strategic plan, by really reaching out to a lot of the members and finding some really new thoughtful things, especially how people can get involved in the League as it was, seemed to be kind of murky how that really happened. That was kind of, the membership was heard there. I think also having some more smaller regional workshops and, and microconferences was a very good suggestion. So I thought overall, I was very impressed with the next three-year strategic plan that was put together.
Agreed.
And I really liked the last General Session where there, we were talking about it earlier, where there was a very interesting statistical analysis of how people vote and some very interesting things there I liked. So I won't go into them, but that was fascinating.
Yeah. Vice Mayor?
I also wanted to mention that I attended the Benefits of Diversity in Municipal Management Meeting and that also was very informative and important and I'm very proud of our town manager for supporting the, those issues in our own management team and look forward to having the, the, the benefits of what the diversity brings to a town. Thank you.
I'll just add a couple of things, just several of my notes were already brought up. A few of us took the ethics training course as well. There were even more environmental sustainability sessions, trying to achieve the goals of the state and local sustainability goals. Several sessions have been had on wildfire preparedness, recovery, review. Our neighbor to the west, Mayor Corsi of Santa Rosa was on that panel, representing the interest that happened to us all last October. And also updates on economic development as it relates to land use, housing, and sustainability. We also had, it was good to see Secretary of State Alex Padilla show up, former president of the League, former Los Angeles council member. So it, it does show that we, we have some significant relationships in the Capitol and that is helping make the League as effective as it is. One of the priorities I've been sharing as I've entered the executive officer position is to build relationships both within our membership. There are almost nineteen-hundred members of the League at this conference down in Long Beach. Get to know each other better as a League because we all go through very similar circumstances and we learn from each other very well. But when you only have a few minutes of a few days every year, that sometimes isn't enough. And it also goes for us building relationships with our legislators for the same reason, not waiting until we're on a deadline or in a crisis to learn somebody's name or position or, or hope for cooperation. So I thought it was a very well-attended and very educational conference. There are some times that the speakers or the, or the topics just don't really resonate, but I thought there was kind of something for all of us each session and it was actually good to have so many of us there. We were able to divide and, and experience a lot of different topics. So thanks to everyone that was in attendance. And Joe T. was there as well and he was, I've never seen somebody gather up as much stuff from the expo as, as our Joe Tagliabashi, but he can, he can gather up the trinkets. I hope he shared them all back in the office as well, at least some of them. Okay, that's the League. Any other reports or announcements from the council? I did just wanna recognize all of the folks that helped make the Walk to End Alzheimer's Disease this last Saturday. Another great success, started and ended at Yountville Community Park, thanks to our public work staff that helped prepare the park and all the volunteers from Yountville and outside of Yountville that helped with the route guidance, as well as the many, many vendors that are supporting the, the effort to find a cure for Alzheimer's. So again, thanks to everyone that made that a great success. I believe that takes care of all of our business for tonight. We already had our closed session. If I could entertain a motion to adjourn in the memory of our former council member and our friend and longtime community member, Jerry Harris, I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Good night.